Hi Jamie.
Hello.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
I can. Good, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Indeed.
Okay.
Definitely. See Mark's on. Mark, did you guys lose power over there at your place this afternoon?
Yes, we did.
I think the entire village of Douglas was
Right.
dark.
Yeah.
We had, luckily, we'd done all our cooking preparation for Thanksgiving meals Saturday and Sunday. So, and we had a big refrigerator trailer back behind Isabelle's. That's where we've been storing everything. And luckily, luckily, we had that and we'd gotten all that done. So. Didn't lose anything today, didn't didn't get behind schedule, which is good.
What happened?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what happened?
Why? No, no, not at all. I have no idea. Mark, do you know? No, he's muted again. Yeah, Ken, I thought if there was any time that we were gonna lose power, it would have been last night with that, our winds that we had. I mean, that was something. Hi Ryan. Hi Russ.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
About to get better.
Very good. Hey, so I see you all the time riding your bike.
Yes.
Uh, when we're coming back from our walk, how far do you usually go?
Average about fifteen miles a day.
Good for you. Good for you. There must be a route that, do you go down Lakeshore and head out to the washout and then up it around and back again?
Yep, back down, turn around to Campbell Road, because I can't ride down there right now and then come back and down Center Street. So I ride the same route pretty much every day, because when I ride in the winter time when it's dark, I don't want to ride somewhere that's unfamiliar, because there's enough hazards hazards as it is, so I like to know at least the known hazards.
Mm hmm.
The biggest issue right now is the deer, because they stand like ghosts on the side of the road.
Have you seen that big buck over there?
No, I saw a picture of it, but I haven't actually seen him out there, but but there's a, I had someone this summer referred to it as Douglas is the petting zoo.
Yeah.
Because they're, honestly, I've got to be careful, because especially down Wiley Road, they will sometimes leap out.
Mm hmm.
And so anyway.
Yeah, indeed. Yeah, they don't really, they're not too bothered by anyone at all.
Not at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have three in waiting.
Let's see what time we got.
I've got kids returning home from the basketball game, so if you hear noise in the background.
Who had a game?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if it's seventh or eighth grade. I think basketball.
Got it. Yeah.
Hey Garnett?
Yes.
What would you like to do with the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Uh, yeah, I don't think we've ever done it in the past when we've been virtual, so Ken's Yeah, I actually have here changes, remove pledge, state location, remind folks to state their location, so.
Oh shoot, that's right.
It's all good. We got it. We got it.
All right, Jamie, about that. No, no pledge of allegiance, well. Move past that.
No, wait for, go ahead, Russ.
No offense, this kind of feels like work. I've had teams meetings all day.
So while we're waiting for everybody, you know, speaking of the pledge of allegiance, did you hear about the Islanders hockey? They they couldn't do their hockey games for over a year in the arena, for whatever reasons, I think a combination of COVID and other types of things. So they had folks, folks could dial in virtually and watch the hockey games wherever they were. And if they were supposedly a home game, there was somebody, you know, singing the National Anthem, but they could join in. And so they finally had their first home game in person the other day, and folks were so used to singing the National Anthem. They have this recording of this gal leading the National Anthem, the entire arena singing the National Anthem, because they've just all gotten into the habit. So just watch out, watch out. If we get too comfortable, I'll start asking y'all sing the National Anthem. All right, how we doing?
Okay, can you, can you hear me okay Garnett?
Yeah, sure can.
All right, no picture today.
Oh, well.
I can't figure out, I can't figure out how to get it, uh, but that's okay. I got a bad hair day anyway.
Very good. All right, all right. I have seven o'clock and I'm not sure if Lauren and John and them are still on vacation and I have not heard from her.
I have. Give me one moment, admitting her right now.
Oh, very good.
And then after that, let me know when I can.
You're good. Yep, let them in.
Okay, I'm gonna admit everyone then.
Okay. Oh, hey.
Okay. We're meeting starting.
We got Moxie's getting connected. Lauren. All right, I think we've, we've got everybody, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting. Jordan, you ready? Jamie?
Uh, yes.
All right, very good. With that, I'll ask the clerk to call roll, and if you could please, just a reminder of state your location.
Becken?
Here, Sagatuck, Michigan.
Gardner?
Here, Sagatuck, Michigan basement.
Leo?
Here, Glenn, Michigan.
Stanton?
Here, Sagatuck, Michigan, in my closet.
Truster?
Here, Sagatuck, Michigan.
Dean?
Here, Sagatuck, Allegan County, State of Michigan.
Louis?
Here, Sagatuck, City of Sagatuck, Allen County, Michigan. Okay, thank you so much. Obviously, we're not going to do the pledge of allegiance, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. Everyone should have gotten a copy of the minutes from November the eighth. I'd be happy to entertain a motion and then we can do any discussion or edits if we need.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve the minutes of the November eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting with city council.
All right. Is that, who is that? Lauren? Stanton? Okay, I have a motion by Truster and a second by Stanton to approve the minutes of November eighth. Any questions, discussions? I see Russ has a hand up.
I do. I didn't intend to do that. It's an error.
All good. Okay. Any, anything to add or change? If not, ma'am clerk, if you could call roll to approve.
Becken?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes. All right, well, that I'll hold off on mayor's comments to the end. If y'all don't mind, we'll move to the city manager's report. Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Good evening. So we went over the city manager's report at your workshop last week. Two new items, which our city manager's report is on page seven. And then two new items are Bridge Street Water Extension. So we have a, a new house that's being constructed on Bridge Street, so that's west of Blue Star, north of the river. And the city ordinance requires that new, new home construction be hooked up to potable water or a city connection. So we're looking at implementing an assessment to run a water extension down that road. So that's something that we're working with our engineer on. Also, we're gonna take a look at extending sewer. That may be a little bit more complicated, but if we're gonna be digging into the ground, that's something that it's at least taking a look at. So that's something that's ongoing. And the, the home builder and the owner, they're pretty eager to get hooked up to water, because that's our policy. And so, you know, they're under construction, so they want to do that pretty quickly. Of more to come on that, you know, something will be, be coming in front of council in as far as a special assessment and/or how we're gonna make the extension. So look forward to that in the coming months. Also, the other new item, which was not discussed last week, was to mention that Kate White, our intern, she's finishing her masters in public administration, so she's gonna be wrapping that up this December. She's very confident that she's graduating, so. Um, yeah, so pretty proud of her and she's added, added a lot to the city. So that's it, Madam Mayor and Council. Happy to answer any questions if you, if you have any.
Right. Council, any questions or comments?
Uh, Mayor here.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, hi.
Hi. Ryan, update on Butler Street sewer extension. I thought we had the bids in and we're gonna be looking at those.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Becken. That's gonna be item fifteen G. On the agenda.
All right, I got ahead of myself. Just unusual.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Ken.
Quick question to Ryan. I see that the lighted Christmas tree was set up in Coffin Park. Do we have a, a due date for turning on the switch?
That's a mystery to me, Mr. Truster. This is gonna be my first go around with the holiday lighting ceremonies. My understanding is that the lighting ceremony is focused over in Wick's Park, like lighting of that tree. So that's, it's all very new to me. So the answer is no, I don't, or I don't know.
I, I was thinking probably gonna be Thanksgiving, but I checked that out. We all love to get that thing lit up.
Yeah, maybe we can coordinate it with the tree lighting.
Yes. That would make, that would make sense. I did touch on, on this very item with Scott Herbert. And he said, yeah, we should coordinate it at the same time, so.
Yeah, I think that'd be fun, just light up the whole place even more. What the heck?
Yeah, I think that's past, past practice has been to coordinate it with the tree lighting, I believe.
Great, great. All right, very good. All right, any other questions for our city manager? Nope. Okay, with that, agenda changes, I'm going to make a few changes. I'm going to move the Sagatuck Township Fire Department under Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. I reached out to Mr. Fox earlier today and was able, unable to talk to him in person, but left him a message to this effect, because we do have a guest speaker, Ken, oh, I hope I says, say this right, Berthume? Berthume? Oh my God, the auditor just out of Saginaw, I know where that is. So I wanted to give us the opportunity to hear about our report and let's see, I think that was the only thing. I think that was it. So that's the only agenda change I have, folks. Anybody else? Good? All right, with that, we're gonna hand it over to the guest speaker and I'll let our manager kick it off.
And
And, or Peter.
Right over to Peter. Peter, if you want to introduce Ken and take it away.
Hello, yeah, Ken's online, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ken. He's the auditors. I think this is year six or year seven that is, we've been doing our audit. And so Ken, we'll let you go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Yeah, this is Ken Bertheome. And good evening, your honorable Mayor Lewis, and members of the Sagatuck City Council, and ladies and gentlemen. I am pleased to have this opportunity to present the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Our audit work again this year went very smooth. We encountered no differences, problems, or issues. We, we received excellent help and cooperation from the city staff, especially Peter. He's a great help in the financial area, of course, and we reported no internal control problems in our work, okay? Uh, we again found that the city bookkeeping was in very good shape. Okay. As a result of our audit work, we were able to issue the best possible unmodified opinion that you will see in the booklet on, on page one and two. In the, it's called Independent Auditor's Report. Okay, now I'd just like to briefly run through the report with you. If you have that handy, you can take a look at it. Maybe you don't have it in front of you, but I'll talk about, yeah, okay. On page seven, in the audited financial statements, this is part of the management discussion analysis. This is a condensed and comparative statement of activities prepared on a full accrual method of accounting. On that basis of accounting, the total increase in net position for the year was approximately one million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Uh, that's the second year in a row that net position increased over a million dollars. We can see here that the property tax revenues held up really good compared to the prior year, up about eighty thousand. We saw that the taxable SEV was up about three point five percent. Which accounts for the increased revenue. The rates were basically the same. Expenditures for public safety, we saw about a hundred thousand more in that area. And about a hundred thousand more in public works. Okay, moving ahead onto page ten. And the, here you have the statement of net position for the year. That's a snapshot of where the city stood in terms of assets and liabilities on June thirty. I think this report's a very sound financial condition for the city. Uh, here we see that the city, in all of its funds, held over nine million dollars in cash and investments on June thirty. Uh, there was a net pension asset of about ninety-eight thousand held on, at that point in time. That means that the pension plan was fully funded at that point. The, the pension plan liability or net pension asset was measured on December, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, which was the closest date. And that's what that reflects. Um, the unrestricted net position was approximately five point eight million dollars. Very good. City's in very good shape there. Moving at the page twelve. Here we see the, for the governmental funds, which is the only category of funds that, basically that the city has. We have no business type funds, but here we see balance sheets created on the modified accrual method of accounting. So here the, you see no long-term debt or pension assets and that type of thing. It's strictly current available resources. This method of accounting, the city again reports a very healthy condition on June thirty. The general fund, fund balance came in at about five million, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars approximately. Uh, of that, there was a one million dollar, of that one million dollars even was committed for parks. And there was some other committed money for the Spears, Spear Bolt Launch, twenty-six thousand. And the Rose Garden had a restricted balance of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine twenty-three. So the funds are in very good shape. Moving ahead on to page fifteen. Here we see for those governmental fund types, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance for the year. Uh, you can see the general fund reported total revenues of three million, one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and one. And expenditures of two million, five thousand, two hundred and sixty-six. So the fund balance for the year altogether increased about nine hundred and eighty-one thousand for the year. So the city did very good in terms of increasing its fund balance. The prior year, fund balance had increased a similar amount, just over a million dollars. So in good shape there. Then moving on to the last page, I want to talk about page eighteen. In the report is, this is part of the, this is from for the proprietary type fund, internal service fund or motor pool. Here you see that the, the balance sheet for that fund also is very solid. You have an unrestricted net position there of about six hundred and forty-eight thousand. There's no debts owed. It's a very solid condition there as well. So in conclusion, I thank you for the opportunity to again work as, and serve as city auditor, and I welcome any comments or questions.
Right, very good. Thank you so much. I'm gonna open it up and if Peter has anything he'd like to add, or the manager, that would be great, Ryan. Otherwise, counsel, and I can't see everybody, so Kate, you're gonna have to help me out here. Feel free to anybody to just pop in, tell me who's talking. Any questions?
Mayor, this is Mark.
Yeah, thanks. Yep, Mark.
Yeah, either Peter or Ken can answer this question. We're looking at revenues. Property tax revenues kind of speaks for itself. Where is the revenues from Oval Beach? Well, what does that fall under?
Well, that would be in, I think that's in charges for services. In the general, in the general fund, you see on page fifteen. There's a, page fifteen, under the general fund, you see a number there, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, twenty-one dollars.
Yeah.
You follow? Okay, so that's where all the money you get from the Oval Beach activities are basically in there. Charging for the, the parking, charging for the concessions and that type of thing goes in there.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'd also assume that's the street end license agreement.
Yes, also. Yes, those two.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, this is Russ Gardner.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Very nice report. And I'm gonna not get your last name right, but Mr. Bethum, very nice. Got a few questions for you and Peter. Hi, Peter. Um, so on page seven, a couple of questions. One, I noticed that there was a drop in our investment earnings, pretty substantial from two thousand twenty. Is there, can you give us a brief update on that? Went from one twenty-one, seven, seven, six, and twenty twenty to fourteen, eight, five, nine, and twenty-one? Basically, it's the interest rates have dove off the cliff because, tank because of the pandemic. The Fed took the interest rates down basically zero. That's where they've been for the last probably fifteen months. And that's the majority of it, because most of our holdings are a lot of money market cash accounts or short-term CDs. That makes sense. Thanks, Peter. Yeah. They're not expenses for the public safety, and I think Ken touched on this, is there was a, just about a hundred thousand dollar increase in public safety costs between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one?
Mm hmm.
There. Go ahead.
Why? Well, maybe, maybe Peter could speak to that.
What page are we on? Page seven, Peter.
Seven. Well. I, you know, on page forty-four does show public safety was budgeted for three hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, and you spent three hundred and sixty-nine.
Under budget.
Let me see, in the prior year, if there's some, for some reason that it was lower, I
You have a percentage that's pretty substantial increase over the previous year, even though it's close to budget.
Um. Yeah.
I don't have an answer, because the, the sheriff's budget really did not change at all. We've got a three-year contract, so I had to go back and look at that one.
I
Funny.
Okay.
Well, the, sometimes, well, because this is a full accrual method accounting for this statement, so it can be different than the fund statements, you know? And one of the differences is the pension plan comes into play when, when the, when the pension asset increased or the liability decreased and so forth for the pension, some of that is charged against public safety. And so you have those, those calculations coming into play on the prior year. Now, that might, that might have, might explain why that's lower in the prior year. Uh, but I could, I would have to check on that to see.
Yeah. Yeah.
We, we did have to bring another replacement vehicle into the fleet, didn't we? Would that have been part of it, the new police car?
Yeah, it's true.
Would that be part of it?
Well, that, yeah, that could, because capital outlay for the, for this statement, this full capital outlay is not an expense. Depreciation is. And so cap, if there was capital outlay built into that budget in the prior year, that didn't get into, it doesn't show here as an expenditure. That gets pulled out of there.
Okay.
Yeah. It's priority being in the motor pool fund anyways.
Oh, okay.
And good question. We'll check it out and report back.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay.
Page eight, down towards the bottom of economic factors in next year's budget, highlighted the last paragraph regarding lead service water replacement. Um, and the, the firm has noted that the city has no reserves for this important issue. So I just want to point that out to council that, that's probably gonna continue to come up and just more of an FYI, picked up on that. Thank you very much, Ken, for including that in the statement as well. And
Well, that's, yeah, that might have been Peter that got that in there.
Well, thank you, Peter. Good job, regardless. Good job, gentlemen. Jumping over to page ten, I've got a question about line item under liabilities, compensated absences. Can you help me understand that?
Well, okay, so there is in the report on page page thirty-three, we showed the amount there. It's total, actually, it's a total of okay, eighty-eight thousand. You have some of it's current, so you got twenty, you have twenty-six thousand of current portion of compensated and then long-term portion of sixty-two thousand. Okay, so that's based on Okay, so that's based on a schedule. We have a policy, and that's described here on page twenty nine in the report. You have a policy to permit full time employees to accumulate earned but unused paid time off, PTO. And depending on the years of service, the they may accumulate PTO hours, several, you know, hours like hundred and sixty, three hundred, three hundred and sixty or four hundred and twenty each year. But that's all explained on page twenty nine.
I see that. Thank you.
Yeah, so there's a calculation that's done and Peter does all of that. And we check all that out. And that's what that liability, that's basically a liability. It's considered, you know, that's something that needs to be in, in the statement of that position.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
I know, just want to comment, fine job, gentlemen and city staff. I just want to, you know, it bears repeating that solid financial position is very important for the city. And not everybody's in this position, so job well done, everybody.
All right, other comments from council, questions, anything? I'll second Russ's comments. Really appreciate everything you do, Peter and Ryan. Well done, so great approach. All right, with that, we'll let Ken head out. And we'll move on. Sound good? Thank you.
Mayor.
Take you back. All right, very good.
See you next year.
Yes, indeed. You too. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to public comments. This is the portion of our agenda where we ask guests to provide any public comment that they would like on any agenda item. I'll let Jamie kind of monitor who's got their hands up. And you'll notice that she has the timer going. So with that, if anybody would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand so Jamie can see you. You see anybody, Jamie?
I do not.
The mayor, we have Lisa, I believe, and Brett Heather.
Brett and Lisa now.
All right, while I let Brett go first. Hi Brett, I didn't even have you on the agenda.
Yeah, no problem. I, I saw it was virtual, so I, it's easy enough for me to pop on and stuff. So I'd like to congratulate all you guys on your newly appointed and elected positions. And I kind of, I went through some of the statistics a little bit today. The previous year, we had fourteen hundred and eighty four incidents. And right now, currently, we're right on track with fourteen hundred and eighty eight for year to date. Some of the categories like the alarms, they went down substantially. Some of the, the medical calls as Chief Janik's been talking about and stuff, those went up a little bit for us also. As we, you know, respond to those if we're close. And that's indicative with what he was been saying too, that increased demand and the. Public safety issues with that. Our intact subjects went up obviously a little bit this, this year. Our open door complaints actually from two years prior, because we usually walk around checking the doors. They went from twenty eight down to sixty year before and then seven. So everybody's doing a good job of keeping their doors shut. And the biggest, one of the largest is parking complaints. We had eighty six parking complaints so far this year. And the previous year, we had thirty four. And then the year before that, we had seventy. So we're kind of on pace with that. But yeah, it was, it jumped up largely from the, the year prior. So and also just anecdotally, during this time of year, as my, you know, career of a police officer for, you know, this length of time. And just wanted to have everybody just, you know, if you have a friend acquaintance or whatever, you know, just make sure you pay a particular attention to them and stuff. This is the time of year where, you know, these holiday feelings and stuff come out. And, you know, people, our calls get increased for people just being depressed and so forth. Now, I think sometimes it's overlooked that, you know, everybody thinks, oh, this person has a lot of friends. But in reality, they have a lot of acquaintances and stuff, and they kind of get left out. So I just, you know, be cognizant of that. And I think everybody does do a good job of just kind of wanting to bring it up and stuff. So, okay, if anybody has any questions, I guess that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Thanks, Brett. Is that a report that we can get a copy of that you can send to Ryan?
Yeah, I'll send it to, I'll send it to Ryan tomorrow. Yeah, I've been off for the last roughly two weeks. So today is my first day back. So yeah, I'll get that. And I, I, I'm going to do a six month, you know, with these same things on, in the January at the six month mark and so forth. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
What the fire department looks like, so I can't, I can't spend that much money on it.
You're okay. Next time I'll get you up under guest speaker so that we.
Yeah, no problem. I wasn't gonna be here, but I saw it came out virtual, so you know what? It's easy enough for me to jump on it, so.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. Okay, all right, with that, I see Lisa, and there's another last name. Boy. Feel free to introduce yourself.
My name is Lisa Anagnostopoulos, and I guess I'll start with an apology. I don't know if this is the right part of the meeting to jump in on or if it's the public comments that comes on section eighteen. I was asked by Laurie Antkobeak from Safe Harbor to speak with you all tonight during the public comment section. So if I'm jumping in too early and I should wait till sixteen, I'll just mute myself again and wait until that point in time.
Yes, if you could, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, see any other hands there, Jamie?
Uh, no.
All right, very good. With that, I'll move this forward. We have no consent agenda items. Next item is request for payment accounts payable approval. Entertain a motion in a second, and then we can discuss if there are any questions.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ken.
I'm gonna mute myself after. Prove the accounts payable of ninety eight thousand ninety nine dollars and forty six cents.
Okay. All right, I have a motion, a trustor and a second by Dean to approve the accounts payable in the amount of ninety eight thousand ninety nine dollars and forty six cents. Any questions, comments from council?
Eric.
Yes, go ahead, Russ.
One question.
Yep.
The Horizon Community Planning for, I think, approximately eighteen hundred dollars. Curious as to what that item is.
Yeah, sixteen hundred, yeah, sixteen hundred and thirty dollars and sixteen cent, manager or Peter?
I can assist with the question.
Okay.
That was for the planning consultant that helped us with the Butler project, Russ.
Right, thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Then on page ten, just a note, you'll see a charge for four hundred dollars for TNT roofing. It's been identified there were four additional trouble spots in the roof at the Mount Bald Head radar station, which Art and his crew have gratefully taken care of. So that should have it sealed up for the winter and keep all the nasty stuff out.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? From council? All right, if not, will Kirk please call the roll?
Second.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes. All right, let's see, we have no public hearings, no introductions of ordinances out of order, no unfinished business. So we're gonna move on to new business. And for folks who are on the call with us tonight, just a little bit of clarification. At some of these, we're gonna pop right through. We had a workshop on Wednesday, and generally, our workshops are our times where we do quite a bit of discussion. So if it feels a time that we're moving along really fast, it's that we've taken the opportunity to do some pretty heavy duty discussion at a previous meeting. So that's just a heads up for everybody. So with that, we'll start with our first one, the Sadaba special event permits and parade, parade permit. Mr. Manager, Ryan.
Madam Mayor, thank you. As you mentioned, discussed at the workshop last week, annual events. And so the recommended motion would be to approve the Sadaba annual tree lighting ceremony and the Christmas parade.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Scott.
Motion to approve the Sadaba annual tree lighting ceremony and Sadaba annual Hootville Christmas parade.
Who is the second from? Was that Lauren? All right, all right, very good. Okay, we've got a motion by Dean and a second by Stanton. Any questions, comments from council?
Just a comment, Mayor, the Shuffle Brigade is ready to march.
Very good. Anyone else? Nope, all right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes. All right, very good. Our next item is pop up patio special meeting. Ryan.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This is on page twenty one, discussed at the workshop related to pop up patios. Council feels like it's a good idea to have special meetings, given the interest in this topic. And so the first date that was discussed was December the seventh, ten AM. And also recommended was to have some alternate dates staggered in the evening at a larger venue. So I think what we should do with, with that is we'll push out. An invite to see how our council can align on some of the other dates at a different venue. So we don't have times to recommend or a venue at this point in time. But if everyone's good with that general plan, then really no action required by, by council unless anyone's objects to the December tenth, seventh at ten AM. Meeting. That makes sense.
Yeah, sure does. So, so my understanding is we, we did, we did talk about having a special meeting on the seventh of December at ten AM to start. And then to move forward with an evening meeting per council member Gardner's request. So we can kind of hit everybody's time allowances.
Yeah.
So no, no motion or second really needed is what, that's what you're saying.
Right, unless anyone objects to that first date, no action required by council.
All right, questions or comments from council?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would just encourage the city staff to get that date and time for those subsequent meetings scheduled as soon as possible, so we can get the word out.
Spread the word with council. Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? All right, with that, then we'll just go on ahead and move to the next item, strategic goals residence survey. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is on page twenty two, discussed at your workshop. We pushed out some questions. We were happy to take, staff was happy to take any input that you would have on these survey questions. We would like council approval on these questions, because surveys can be tricky. And sometimes you can, you can be criticized for asking the wrong question or asking with the leading question. So we would like council approval on this.
All right, very good. Motion a sec, yep, is that Ken?
Yeah, I would move to approve the survey as presented to be sent through various channels.
Second.
Yeah.
Leo, Leo, thank you. All right, a motion by Truster and a second by Leo to approve the survey as presented to be sent through various channels. Any questions or comments from council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Russ, two things. One is I noticed in the notes that it was mentioned that in, I think this is City of Celine, that they used. The schools as well as a form of communication, I would encourage us to contact either superintendent or the high school principal to see if they'd be willing to do that. They have a pretty robust distribution list. So again, in the interest of getting this out to as many folks as possible. And I forgot what my second point was. Must not have been that important.
Maybe you're gonna say the commercial record of Scott.
Yes, a variety of other, our personal contact lists, you name it.
Yeah, as I said at the workshop, I think the goal is to just blast this as you can't over communicate on this. I really think it's important for folks to know what's gonna take place. That way, we could never, it could never be said that you didn't know about it.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from council? No, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Stanton. Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes. All right, very good. Thanks, everybody. We'll leave it to you, Ryan, to get that going. All right, our next item is hazard mitigation plan. It was very stimulating reading for anybody who took the time. Ryan.
Madam Mayor, this is on page, starts on page twenty five, goes all the way to page seventy. The recommended motion is to approve resolution two, one, one, two, two A, as presented, adopting the multi jurisdictional hazards mitigation plan.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, motion to approve resolution two, one, 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 two, two, dash, A, as presented, adopting the multi jurisdictional hazardous hazards mitigation plan.
Second, Leo.
All right, very good. I have a motion by Dean and a second by Leo. Comments from council, questions? Really quickly, one of the, for the folks who are on the line, one of the items that came up, if you did take the time to read it, was, I think it was seismic, seismic issues or earthquakes. And Ryan, your, your response was very good. I thought it'd be worth repeating of why that was included in our mitigation plan.
Yeah, that was a curiosity to me when I first read through the plan. But there are some, there's a, Scott, Dean, help me out, that nuclear power plant and.
Yeah, yes, we have, we have a couple not too far away. We have one in South Haven due to be decommissioned next year, but that takes a long time.
Yeah, so if there was any seismic shifts, what, you know, has occurred in Michigan over the years. FEMA would, would, would help out, so that's why it was included in the report.
Right, very good. If there are no other questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes. All right, very good. Next up, we have Oval Beach Beach Operations. Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, this is a, excuse me, informational item reviewed at the workshop, expenses, revenue over expenses. Very good year for Oval Beach, net income of three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Happy to answer any questions on this item.
All right. So this, we don't need a motion, because this is informational, right?
Correct.
All right, very good. Counsel, questions, comments?
I think just one comment, Mayor. You know, I think we all realize, having looked at the financial statement, you know, what an important part of the beach is in terms of our economy here in Saginaw. And I think we should, you know, during our strategic planning session, give a lot of thought to some of the feedback. And I'm sure we'll get some during the survey as well from, from residents and visitors alike, on things they like about the beach and things that maybe came up a bit short last summer. You know, obviously, I think we're all mindful, there were complaints about the restrooms or the porta johns that we had there. So I think, you know, given the very significant revenues we're seeing from the beach, I think, you know, we need to be continuing to maintain that beach at the highest level of quality. And I think we'll need to probably spend a little bit more to make sure folks have clean restrooms and, and have as good of an experience as we want them to have and keep coming back. So that'd be my comment on that.
Anyone else feel free to chime in? All right, very good. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your time on this. I don't know if Peter's still with us. Ryan, thank you so much. All right, next up is project manager position. Mr. Manager. All right, next up is project manager position. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is on page seventy-three of your packet. Discuss at your workshop. What we're talking about is creating a new position to help with city administration. We're sort of a small team, not only city administration, but Department of Public Works and all the employees that we have, Oval Beach in- included. Follow-up questions? Or responses, I should say, from the workshop. Both from Mr. Gardner. One of the questions was, the salary is listed at, or the range is listed at forty-five thousand to fifty-two thousand. The question was, what, what is the position fully loaded with, with benefits? That's gonna be another twenty to thirty thousand dollars, depending on the employee, right? If they're a single person, you know, health insurance is the major driver on, on, on that cost. So Peter is with us still, answer any questions on that, on that particular point. The other question was related to the number of projects. I did send out an email earlier today that not only had the strategic planning list of projects that we went over earlier this spring, which is a pretty solid list, but I also sent out what I consider kind of to be an internal document that I use that just kind of stay organized with staff and that also has about, I don't know, seventy-five, eighty projects on it. So here to answer any questions, strongly recommend that the city move forward with this position. It's not a new idea. The, the, the idea of hiring either an assistant city manager or somebody to help coordinate projects goes back with the previous city, city manager. So again, I, I support the city hiring one, like a new position.
All right, very good. Why don't I kick us off with an entertaining motion and a second, and then we'll enter into discussion. Scott, yep.
No, you want, if you want to go for it.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll, I'll motion that we approve a project coordinator position with a salary range of forty-five thousand to fifty-two thousand dollars, depending on qualifications.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Dean and a second by Leo. Questions, comments from council, discussion? Feel free to chime in because I can't see everybody.
Well, Mayor, I'll start. I mean, the reason, the reason I'm making this motion, you know, we never take a hiring decision lightly. You know, it's a big commitment from, from, from the staff and it's a big commitment to that person to, you know, to, to apply for such a role. But I look at two things. I look at the strong financial position that was just presented to us this evening. And, you know, that doesn't come without making investments in the city. And I think this is an important investment. I think the most important asset we have, even more so than the beach frankly, is, is our staff and our people in this town. So I think we need to continue to invest in staff. And I believe there's a unique opportunity for Sagittuck with the pass, passage of the infrastructure bill. Michigan stands to earn, or not to earn, Michigan stands to be given ten billion dollars. Of that ten billion dollars, seven point three will go to roads and bridges, sewers. A hundred and ten million will go to electric vehicles. One billion will go to protecting the Great Lakes, which is the largest amount of funding that's ever gone to Great Lakes restoration activities. And then you've got another one point three billion going to clean water, which goes directly to the lead service lines we were talking about earlier that we still have in this town. So for all these reasons, I think it's incumbent upon us to get city staff, a project manager that can take on some of these, these projects. Ryan's outlined a very large list of priorities for the city. And there's a lot of opportunity here. I think, you know, a lot of towns don't have the resources to even go after this funding. If, if we create a position where part of that role is to go after some of this opportunity, which will be, quite frankly, maybe once in a lifetime. I, I think it would be remiss of us not to take advantage of it and have the staff and the horsepower to, to go after some of this funding.
Very good. Thank you, Scott.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna chime in behind Scott Dean. I mean, I, I think the possibility of regular and high-quality grant writing could allow this position to essentially pay for itself. And I'm speaking as someone who just shepherded a million dollar tap grant to the state on the bike trail. There is money available, but it requires a lot of due diligence to procure. And I would like to see us in a good position to go after a lot of different grants at the state, federal level and even with private foundations. So I also think that just as we are working on our relationship and improving our relationship and communication with businesses and residents that, in my opinion, that has been underdeveloped, that requires some attention. And that's, that's an investment that we have made in a direction, I think, that we would like to continue to move.
Very good. Thank you. Other comments, questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I am support, I am supportive of this position. As has been said, the financial position of the city is such that a position like this, I think, is warranted. However, I would not put the weight of the world on the shoulders of this person. In terms of grant writing and revenue generation, I do not believe this will be a budget-neutral position. That requires a specified set of skills, which I think this person is more likely to be a project manager to, to assist the city manager and the superintendent of Department of Public Works. And I think there's a long list of ideas and projects that the city manager sent to us today, which I think are gonna be, you know, enough to keep a person busy for quite a while. So I would, I would suggest we focus on project management skills as opposed to any kind of grant writing skills. That's the kind of service that can be purchased if needed. But I don't think we should put the weight of the world on this person. Let them get a running start with the help of the city manager.
So noted. Other comments? If not, we have a motion by Dean and a second by Leo. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes. All right, very good. Thanks so much, everyone. The last item under new business is Butler Street Sanitary Sewer Project Bid Award. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So this is an item that was not discussed at your workshop, but it has been on my city manager report over the last few months. And basically, what's happening here is that we're trying to get four sanitary sewer connections to businesses at Butler, at the intersection of Butler and Hoffman that have not had those historically. I don't want to go into too many details on the project, but it's highly necessary. And so we went out for, for public bids on the project. And we received a, a pretty favorable bid that it came in line with the engineers' estimates. And so the recommendation here is to, to move, to approve the bid from Al's Excavating for on one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars.
All right, very good. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion in a second, then we'll open up for discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Ken, go ahead.
I'll move to approve the bid received from Al's Excavation for one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Second.
All right, a motion by Truster and a second by Gardner. Any discussion or comments? Mark?
Yeah.
Write them.
Yeah. If I, if I could just maybe add a little bit, basically, this is a sometime referred to as just a spur, which is an extension of the sewer main that runs down Hoffman and Hoffman and Butler Street intersection. It'll head north about as far as Santa Fe, favoring the west side of the road. There'll be some it's going to be over the winter, unfortunately. If you read the, through the bid, the sewer work will be completed and hooked up this, in the winter. The cleanup and the restoration of the sidewalks will be done in the spring. I think that's right. Ryan can correct me if wrong, if I'm off on that. And our Department of Public Works supervisor is, is on board and has been participated in the, in the discussion. This also will eliminate some future sewer work, at least in that general area on Butler Street. In, in the future, when there's going to, when, when, or if Butler Street is rebuilt, at least that portion of the sewer work will be completed. These funds are accumulated funds in our sewer account that have generated over the years from both the hookup fees and also from the selling of sewer capacity out of the Cal Lake Plant of Sagittuck Township. So, you know, maybe that gives a little bit of an overview of the project.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead. Is that Ken?
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, Ryan, could you, or I thought I saw, or, oh, there you are, John Moxie, could comment on the, the impact that this project will have on, on people being able to access stores on Butler Street over the holiday period? You know, just generally, how is that gonna impact us as, as what we think is, we're trying to build as a destination for holiday visitors?
John, if you don't mind, I want, I'd like to go first on this one. And we're planning the construction to start just as the holiday Christmas parade is beginning. That's a joke. So yeah, we're highly sensitive to, to the, the business accommodations. So going beyond my bad joke, John, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, just piggybacking on, on some of Mark's comments, our, our intent is to get that sidewalk put back yet this year. Obviously, there may need to be some cold weather protection in that, but that is the intent, is to do everything but the asphalt work this, this fall yet. So that basically, we, we will just have millings over the winter. And then in the spring, we would remove those millings and, and put in the asphalt pavement markings, things like that. So I've, I've personally spoken with each of the four directly affected property owners. The two on the west side will be connecting as, as the sewer goes in. Basically, the two on the east side opted out just from a cost standpoint for, for them in their internal plumbing. But the pipe will be there and I've, I've told them, you know, there's no cheaper time than today, but we realize their, their finances are what they are. So the pipe will be there if and when they have issues on the east side. But that, that's the intent, is to try and get it done somewhere around two weeks is what we're hoping in the fall and then probably another week, week and a half in the spring to prep things, pave things and stripe things. So we're, we're doing our best to work around businesses to maintain access, but there will be a little bit of disruption for a few days here and there.
So you anticipate work to be done during the period I'm concerned about between now and Christmas, say, would be the first two weeks of December? Is that the impact?
Yeah, the, the contractors proposed a December sixth start date, which works really well with Christmas parade. That was coincidence, that wasn't really planning. And they are estimating about a week and a half, two weeks roughly to, to get things back to, to millings. During that period, the sidewalks will be open, except where it's just removed, where that sewer lateral needs to get put in. The, the road itself will be closed, but people will be able to park outside the project area and walk in. And that's what I've told the, the business owners.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other comments from council?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Question for Councilman Becken. So the, so the line's gonna go north on Butler to just about Santa Fe. And then as Mr. Moxie just mentioned, that the two owners on the east side have opted out. The owners on the west side have opted in. Is there gonna be an extension on Hoffman at all, or is this just Butler? Straight up Butler?
The sewer main already exists on Hoffman Street.
Okay.
So this will be tying into that sewer main.
Thank you. Where I'm going with this is, some of you may know, over the course of the summer, there were some issues in the space between Wally's and Land Sharks. Is this going to impact that? And I don't know all of the issues that took place there.
That is correcting, this project is correcting that problem specifically. Currently, the property owners in question on the west side do not have direct access to the sanitary sewer system. They're pumping it into a manhole and then it is being pumped out periodically by
Okay.
trucks. So that's a health hazard. It's been, it's been on the, I think, Ryan's you know, to-do list and it's just getting the, getting the bids together with what's going on, you know, post-pandemic along with timing it, so it's at least disruptive as possible. But anyways, Russ, yes, that's correcting that issue and eliminating that problem.
Thank you, Mr. Becken. So, Mr. Moxie, what, what's the approximate cost for the property owners on the west side?
I, I don't know what their, what their costs per se are. I, I would estimate something on the order of between five and ten thousand would be my guess.
Per parcel?
Per parcel, but that's a, that's a rough guess. That's a
Okay.
kind of a private plumbing issue, which I don't deal with quite as much.
Yeah, you don't, some of them might have to do some substantial interior plumbing work. For instance, if their sewer exited the rear of the building and now it has to exit the front of the building, they could have some interior changes that have to be made. But I can share with you that the property owners are very excited to get this project completed.
Yeah, that's gonna be my next comment is despite the disruption to the business owners down there, which I know is going to be painful, the ultimate goal here is to make sure that everything is sanitary and that the property owners are gonna be happy with the change too. So thank you for entertaining my questions. I appreciate the information.
All right, anybody else? Counsel? All right, with that, we have a motion by Truster and a second by Gardner. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes. All right, very good. Thanks, everybody. All right, with that, we've come to that portion. Oh, what I got?
Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry to
What you got?
Chime in here, but Ryan, do we have to approve the engineering portion of the on, on the agenda item, the funding for the engineering costs at fifteen thousand?
I think that was wrapped into the motion. Let me check that. Yeah, that was
Yes, it was.
One.
Oh, the one thirty-four, I got it, one thirty-four plus fifteen, one forty-eight, right? We just didn't mention the, the engineering costs.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, John's gotta be taken care of, so.
Very good.
Mark, appreciate it.
We got, we got him, we got him.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank, thank, thank you for correcting that, Ryan.
It's all good. All right, very good. We're to item number sixteen, public comments. This can be on any item. I'll ask folks to kind of help me and raise their hand and Jamie can help me out. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Introduce yourself. Who do we have?
We have Lisa.
Hi, yes, Lisa, again. Yes, thank you for being so patient.
Thank you so much and I apologize for jumping in too early. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. My name is Lisa Anagnis Stoklis and I am a member of the Board of Directors for Safe Harbor Children's Advocacy Center. In August, our executive director, Lori Ann Koveak, attended one of your meetings to discuss the prevention programs that Safe Harbor provides throughout Alleghen County. Recently, Lori sent a letter to your council regarding our current request for ARPA funding to help build a new Safe Harbor building. We are presenting this request to every municipality in Alleghen County. Each year, Safe Harbor's Alleghen County Center provides safe environment for two hundred Each year, Safe Harbor's Alleghen County Center provides safe environment for 200 children to share their story of sexual and severe physical abuse. In our current building, which is 2,400 square feet, we are very limited as to how many children can be served each year. This is in large part due to the fact that when a child is interviewed, much of our building space is needed to conduct the interview as this process is conducted with a multidisciplinary, um, approach. During each interview, we have representatives from law enforcement, Child Protective Services, the prosecuting attorney and mental health professionals, along with our specially trained staff interviewers. All of these individuals observe the interview via closed circuit television so that they may gain the necessary information for their investigation, thereby eliminating multiple child interviews. Without this process, each child would need to tell their story multiple times, re-traumatizing the child during each retelling. In our current building, under normal operating conditions, only one child may be interviewed per day, while potentially two children may receive therapy, but no other services can be done at the same time. And with COVID measures in place to ensure the safety of our children and their families, we've encountered many complications and delays in providing our much-needed services. In our new facility, which will be 6,000 square feet, we will be able to provide simultaneous services, including the ability to interview two children at a time in separate rooms with two different sets of team members in separate rooms, while our board-certified child abuse pediatrician can conduct a body safety medical exam in a medical exam suite. Two children will be able to participate in traditional therapy. One child will be able to participate in art therapy, and yet another child in play therapy, all at the same time. Our goal is to break ground on this facility in the spring. The cost to build and furnish our new facility is 1.8 million dollars. So far, we've been able to raise just over a million dollars. We are respectfully requesting to be considered in the distribution of your ARPA funds so that we can help create healthier and stronger communities and help child abuse victims find hope and healing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Other public comments? Jamie, do you see anybody?
I do not.
All right, very good. Okay, um, you have in your packets, um, communications regarding the Solberg Dock license at 720 Park Street. We did discuss this, um, and had a public comment at the beginning of the meeting on Wednesday. Um, so for this right now, there's no recommended motion. Um, so this is just a communication. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Right, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, very good. We'll move on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. Who out there has a report for me? Anybody? Any boards or commissions meet this last week?
It's Dan Fox.
If he's there and has a report?
He's waving his hand, yes.
All right, Mr. Fox.
Thanks, Garnett, for the heads up this morning, the last minute agenda change. Didn't get back because I didn't, I'm lazy. I somehow missed the initial message, so I didn't get to it until late today, later today. Apologize. Um, this is, uh, oh, and I'm Dan Fox, City of Sagittar, County of Alleghen, State of Michigan. I am Secretary to the Board, Sagittar Township Fire District. Uh, this relates the summary of the fire board meeting on the fifteenth of November in order. We reviewed the fire district's current financials and approved payments totaling 103,447 dollars and 33 cents for the most recent month. Uh, on the budget review, Peter let us know that, uh, with twenty, roughly 25% of the year behind us, uh, 20, 27% of our budget, uh, has been, uh, our, our budgeted expenditures are in the house, so pretty comparable. Chief Janik reported, uh, is that regular report? He updated the regular call report and analysis for the past month, which I believe you already have been provided a copy. So I'll go through all that. He did over, did note that overlapping calls were 30, 38% of the total, you, I believe you know, overlapping calls are simultaneous, multiple calls for service. And they keep, we keep track of those because that poses particular stress on the, uh, on the district's resources and people. The, the, uh, fire service is creating a new item in their monthly report activity related to an inspection tally, uh, keeping track of the inspections that the, the fire service does in the, um, in the three areas, uh, primarily to give a better read on overall district workflow, workload. Uh, Chief noted the continuing shortage of advanced life support assets in the area, uh, and that came to a head recently, I believe Halloween night, I'm not sure, I think, uh, when there was a very serious injury call in Sagittar City where the response was that no truck was available from, from the EMS, folks in Holland. Fortunately, with some jumping through hoops, uh, the fire service was able to get uh, the Fenville-based, Fenville-based ambulance, uh, into the, into the situation. But you've talked about it before, we've talked about it before, this, this, uh, life support asset thing is going to be a continuing problem, partly based on age, partly age of the population, partly based on just overall demand and partly based on, uh, on, uh, overall lack of, uh, successful recruiting in that area, personnel recruiting. Uh, Chief noted that the seasonal rise in motor vehicle accidents has already begun. There were seven such incidents before noon on the morning of the fourteenth of November, which was the first cold snap. And when people have yet to adjust their driving habits to slick roads. Chief also noted that the turnout gear extractors and drying cabinet, which were funded by FEMA, have been installed at the fire station. These assets, uh, take the turnout gear, the fire equipment gear worn by the fire personnel during incidents and, and basically clean those, uh, wearables of all sorts of toxic chemicals that are present in, in those sorts of fire situations, emergency situations. Under unfinished business, Chief reported significant process, progress on the pending lawsuit settlement in the township. The, they're very close to final agreement, including the indemnification of the fire district, uh, related to water supply. As, as it was on your thing, we reviewed the, um, Old Alleghen Blue Star Highway. In addition to the traffic study that you, you guys, uh, learned about this evening, the township is, has or is in the process of installing a lighted radar speed sign, not unlike the ones here in the city, uh, out on Blue Star, on the, uh, Blue Star sides of that intersection. Uh, Chief updated, uh, again, the 2192 fireboat status, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority Insurance Carrier. Six August, when it sank on six August, was too severe and met the threshold for a total loss. Company called Lake Assault has been approved and will build a comparable 22-foot aluminum work boat as a replacement. Pardon. Anticipated delivery for the new boat is the first of May 2022, barring any supply issues. And the, uh, fire district will be responsible for the $1,000 deductible on the insurance policy as our only payment toward the 131,096 dollar total cost of that boat, which the MM, RMA has already paid 25% so to begin the work, to begin the process of ordering supplies and whatnot. Under new business, Chief advised the board of a 4, 525 dollar dividend from the workman's compensation insurance. Just good news. Pardon me, the board reviewed, discussed, and authorized a $9,000 expense for one-third of the purchase price for an unmanned aerial vehicle, a drone, to be shared with both Ganges and Fenville Fire Departments. This is, uh, we talked about it for a fair bit of time in the meeting. This is a, a highly capable, uh, drone. This is not the $200 ones or whatever you can buy on Amazon. Um, for example, the drone is able to, to lift and carry, uh, life vests to someone who might be offshore in the ice or whatever, struggling. Uh, so that was approved. We also approved, or reviewed and discussed a recent, uh, long Detroit Free Press article regarding a statewide shortage of, of fire and EMS personnel, which had, uh, which identified more issues than it did answers. Although interestingly enough, there is no shortage of these people in Detroit. They have ample staff and ample recruits. Go figure. Uh, under correspondence, we received a thank you note from the Sagittar Public Schools, uh, Committee there for the support uh, of the department regarding the, related to the recent homecoming parade. And then congratulated, we also received a congratulatory personal letter copy from, uh, the state Senate President Pro Tem, uh, Eric Nesbit, to Chief Janik, which noted, and I quote, "I want to offer you, offer heartfelt congratulations. I know you're receiving the Michigan Inspector Society's 2021 President's Award. Your service is impressive and your dedication to your community is appreciated since you clearly go above and beyond, adding you are a humble and admirable leader," all of which I think is accurate. So we thank Eric Nesbit for that. Uh, these are only the highlights, uh, of the meeting. There is a full video available on our meetings. Like yours are always open to the public and we invite anyone to join us at any time. Any questions? I'll answer them. Or try.
Right. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Any other boards, commissions, or committee reports?
And a mayor, Cal Lake report. We had a thorough, uh, discussion about operations. Everything is, is, is running smoothly. The, uh, we, the, uh, the fire hydrant water flow test, which has to be done every two to three years, which makes sure that your, uh, fire hydrants are pumping adequate water to all portions of the, uh, water system. That was completed. A majority of our time was spent with a representative, uh, Kelly Han from Fleas, Fleas and VandaBrake, who, along with our manager, Darryl Van Dyke, is working on and produced a draft risk and resilient, resiliency assessment report, which is now a requirement, statutory requirement. And it, and it has to do with the security of your water system from, uh, from outside attacks such as, uh, cyber sec, cyber attacks as well as, as other physical, uh, property damage, uh, related type attacks. Uh, pretty interesting discussion, uh, that RRA report will be finalized here probably the next, uh, 45 to, uh, 60 days. Uh, we also got word that, uh, we should be taking delivery of a, uh, a new, uh, crane truck, which is a real critical part of our, uh, maintenance fleet at Cal Lake. It's over a year since it was ordered. So, uh, supply issues obviously affected that, but that's a real critical state-of-the-art type crane truck, which will not only allow us to lift things up and down out of holes, but also will have, uh, uh, generator attached, uh, air capacity, uh, to assist, uh, various air, air tools and some other goodies. I think the guys are looking forward to having that out there. So, uh, that's about it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other boards and commissions? It's been a quiet, quiet couple of weeks. All right, nope. With that, we'll move to council comments and I'll just kind of randomly go around the horn. Holly Leo? Are you muted?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Lauren Stan?
Um, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for having this meeting go virtual. I'm not feeling well, unfortunately. I'm very under the weather and, uh, nice to not spread my germs to the council in person. Um, and I just wanted to let everyone know, I had a chance, I was on the, uh, marketing committee, uh, for the Sagittar Douglas Convention and Visitors Bureau. And we had a great conversation about how things are going as far as the CVB. And of course, the issue of citywide Wi-Fi came up. And of course, they said they would love to be a partner if that is something that we pursue and they can use it in many ways as far as marketing the city and our surrounding areas as far as, um, having free Wi-Fi in the area. So if we go forward with that, they would be a great partner. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Mark Becken?
Uh, nothing more to add other than wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Ken Truster?
Uh, same here. I'm a happy Thanksgiving and, and I echo what Lauren said about virtual meetings. I think the way the, uh, pandemic is kicking back in, it's, uh, like worse than it ever was, uh, in Michigan. Uh, we're doing all right then. Thanks, John. Appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you. Russ Gardner?
I think I've used up my, a lot of comments during the, uh, items, so I will wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and, um, glad to be on board.
All right, very good. Scott Dean, Mr. Pro Tem?
Just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Have a safe Thanksgiving and look forward to seeing you all in a couple of weeks at the parade.
All right, very good. All right, uh, last thing, just a couple of comments on my end. Uh, congrats to Kate on her pending graduation. So always a good thing. Uh, reminder to council, please join us for the tree lighting November the 26th at 5:30. I think that seems to be the time when we'll flick the switch, uh, and then of course the parade is, uh, Scott mentioned. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's over.
Who we got? Who said that?
That was Russ.
Russ Gardner, all right, a second. I got Truster. All right, motion by Gardner, a second by Truster. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Becken?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes. All right, everybody. Thanks for a great meeting. See ya.
Yeah.
Thanks all. Good night.
Night.